I'd like to call to order the Wednesday, September 12th, 2018 meeting of the Southborough School. Welcome back, everybody. First quarter business as usual is audience sharing. Does anybody have anything to share? We'll move along to new business and back to school opening assessment.
We're back. Nine days in for the new school year, and there's a lot of folks here this evening, certainly our administrative team, but those from Central Office usually join us. The first meeting to talk about what's happened over the summer. There's lots of work still continues, even though our students aren't with us. I do think I need to address the bus transportation issue first and foremost, because I think that was the most significant back-to-school event that we've all had to deal with, and I'd like to recognize and extend appreciation to those folks at Central Office who basically have been nannying the phones and creating spreadsheets and trying to address the issues in a very team-oriented way. This year, we took a change of scheduling process by having NRT, which is our bus company, North Reading Transportation, schedule the routes. We learned last year, and I had mentioned it several times at school committee, that customarily, the bus company, because they are the experts at scheduling, and I use that term, I know not strongly at this point in time, because I think some would take issue with that as well as perhaps us, but in most cases, they do about ninety percent, and the schools do about ten percent of the tweaking. And ordinarily, any bus schedule, you wouldn't think would change that significantly in a course of a year, because for the most part, you have twelve of thirteen grades that are fairly stable. The only change you have is moving the eighth graders to the high school in a different transport, or whenever you have a building change. That would warrant a change of bus, perhaps number or route because of the time. In this case, and I know this isn't going to be a popular comment, but I'm almost glad that it happened this year, even though it's been incredibly explosive and difficult to deal with, because at the same time, I'm not sure we would have noticed the sort of deficiencies in the way that we have been scheduling for some time. And so, in the nine days, we've addressed a significant number of issues. I won't say that we're a hundred percent where we want to be. I want to thank Greg for marshaling a team of folks, which include Nancy Bissette and Cheryl Lepre, who have been looking at spreadsheets and calling the bus company. I myself had some very challenging conversations with the owner, who I'm not sure we're going to be answering one another's calls too quickly the next couple of days. But in addition to the regular difficulties, you know, the normal startups with transportation, where buses are running late, and it takes a while to tweak the times of arrival, we've had some athletic issues and pickup after school with late buses, those kinds of, those are issues we contend with every year. But what we did notice is that our database needed to drastically be cleansed. It was the same database that we've been using for a number of years. We had, we were carrying two hundred unenrolled names in that database, and that needed to be removed. And we also had a number of students whose names were not even in there, and that really exacerbated whatever change we were attempting to make this year in good faith with efficiencies and routing. So that really created a lot of challenges, and it's the same database that we've been using to schedule from and with for some time. So that's why I say, I think if we hadn't had this occur, we wouldn't have realized that we had all these issues with different students in the database. So I feel fairly confident that, having done that now, and tying it into our student information system, where the bus numbers of students will also be generated with a direct match-to-match of enrolled students, that we've addressed whatever gaps were identified this year. And so, one of the things that I'm, you know, hopeful with is that last year, we were talking about buses into October. It wasn't such an explosive situation that we were dealing with right at the start, but it was discussions that we still had into our October school committee meetings in a couple of the districts, of the three. So I think this year, we're all in at the beginning of the year, and I'm hoping that we won't have these longitudinal discussions about busing into October. But having said that now, I think I can have a better appreciation for why, in fact, that might have been, because I think we were doing far more manual scheduling than perhaps we needed to. So what good will come out of this? I think we'll have a database that's accurate, and then as we move forward for next year in scheduling, and certainly there'll be conversations about this, being more mindful of a mind-to-mind match of the students who are enrolled in our school. Furthermore, in a perfect scheduling world, you're moving K kids, K students onto the bus routing. That is the one new sort of group of students, and anyone else who's new to the system, not two hundred and three hundred every time. So that should really pick up our ability to quickly address transportation issues as they come up. There'll always be transportation issues, whatever they might be. I also want to propose to the school committee that, as part of our policy subcommittee work, we look at creating a transportation policy, which we don't really have. So in part of the work, trying to figure out, you know, what's the state requirement, what's the ruling, I also uncovered a lot of language about some conversations we may want to have to just create a policy that's a little bit more rigorous in terms of aligning our language with the state, so that wherever and whenever, we have something to go back to and have these conversations in subcommittee and bring it forward. So I think, you know, between shifting the scheduling and having that as an opportunity to see where the gaps were, and now sitting down and, you know, spending, it's a difficult policy that we'll be having conversations about perhaps, we don't need it for another year, basically, so we have really time to be thoughtful and thorough with that, and would recommend that, you know, this discussion move to Southborough Policy Subcommittee. And I know, in your packets, there are four meetings then, so there'll be some good work that we can do with that. I just want to thank, you know, all the parents. It's been challenging. Some of the parents, we've had multiple conversations with. One particular bus of nine days, the same driver only appeared behind the steering wheel three times, so there have been substitute drivers as well, and, you know, the bus company's been contending with that as well. I do have to say something about NRT, because I think we also have to be appreciative of the challenges that they had. When I, you know, meet and speak with other superintendents, I don't think there's any perfect bus company that's out there. There's a shortage of drivers and some of the challenges that we're confronted with, they are as well. So a lot of folks have asked me, where are we in our contract? We had a three-year contract, and then we had two years to renew at the same price. So it would not be my recommendation at this point to say that it was just NRT, and that, I think, you know, continuing the partnership with them, we have a whole year to make a decision, but I do have to go on record and suggest that they've tried to be as time-sensitive, although it wasn't instantaneous, which to us is what time-sensitive means. Fix it now. I think they've been fairly responsive, given the difficulty of the situation. So I thought, just addressing it, and then we can listen to the joyful start at the schools, because I think besides the bus issue, which we decided to take in at Central, to keep the issues away from the schools, and to give us some understanding of what the problems were, so we could address them systemically instead of ten times worked, because I think for the most part, a lot of those issues weren't at the school level, and they didn't have to call NRT, which is great, because they could focus on welcoming the students and the teachers back and the parents.
I do just have one question. Could you just speak to whether there's any sort of additional process that's been put into place now that would include maybe an in-house review of the bus routes before they're implemented? Because I think one of the issues that I noticed when I was looking at, let's say, our route, was that the houses were listed out of order and not how they would actually come up for the driver, and so I think there were some issues that required more local knowledge than maybe what NRT has. So I'm just wondering if there's maybe an enhanced process in place for the next time around.
That's a great question, and, you know, we do have, and as we were going through, we identified some things we would do very differently. I mean, it's been handled this way for many, many years until now, when we turned it over, and again, you know, I just want to underscore, I think it was waiting to happen. And so, we are going to do the transportation as a team, and that team will include Lorraine or the data specialist, because what, one of the things that we uncovered is that, in order to put the bus numbers in IPASS, which is the Student Information System, there was no pull-through process. So we had all of these students without bus numbers. And so, Lorraine, because she's a database wizard, quickly created a database that would address that issue. And so, one of the things we know that we're going to do is really sit down with currently enrolled student information and just pull it through, Transfinders, the scheduling system, so that we can assign bus numbers at the same time, which will guarantee a one-to-one match. And I think a lot of that, you know, I'll be completely upfront, I don't dig into the transportation, because it's been done the same way for a while, and, you know, appreciate the fact that probably, like, I should have been more in the management level of the bus transportation routes, for the most part, because it had been done the same way for years, and, you know, I know we took to October to finally work out the tweaks. I'm not sure if we would have noticed there was a deficiency in the database, because I think a lot of this had been done manually scheduled along the way. So what we've done is we've decided we're going to have a team approach to scheduling, so no one is the master of transportation. It's done uniformly, and I think with that, the reason a lot of the bus numbers may be out of order is because we were putting these kids back on the route, and now, when we have the route, I think it's naturally going to come out sequentially. So between those two things, I think that would be a big plus and a step in the right direction. So that's a great question, and as we go through this, we're jotting down more. I'll give you another example. Throughout the summer, when students have been added to our routes, a separate email has been sent. So if I was at the bus company and I handle one of multiple districts, I'm receiving a lot of emails. What we've really decided is that we're going to build a relationship that says, every Friday, you're going to get a Google Doc with all of the changes that have occurred through that week, which hasn't been the practice. And so that then really just focuses down with one communication, and we can check on that one communication instead of seven or eight emails that are going back and forth, perhaps daily, whenever a student enrolls. Big efficiency, you know, step forward. So those are some of the things that we've been talking about since this.
Any other buzzes?
Can you clarify what you said in the beginning? You said something like, usually, they do ninety percent of it, or did you say?
No, usually, we were doing ninety percent, and so that's what really stimulated the conversation, like, why are we doing ninety percent of the scheduling when most districts have the bus company doing ninety percent? So it's transferring Transfinder to the bus company, and one of the things that we've been talking about with them is that they simply don't have enough, perhaps, Transfinder stations that are active at any one time, that are servicing multiple, you know, districts. So somehow to link ours more effectively with them, so that we can do a mirror instead of a total turnover. So that's another thing that we're talking about with them. That's my update. Not as joyful as greeting the students back, but when they got off the buses, it was joyful. So I'd just like to, you know, turn it over to the principals to hear how opening day was.
Sure, I'll start. First, I want to thank Kalid Baba, Robert Malwin, and all the custodians and students who took part in cleaning the building over the summer. They did a tremendous job making our school sparkle for our open house and our first day of school. Speaking of the open house, we had ours on the twenty-seventh, two days before the start of school. We've been doing this for several years now to help minimize students' anxiety before the actual start of school. It's a tremendous benefit for our kindergartners, seeing the classroom, seeing their teacher, meeting some friends before the start of school, and it helps teachers connect in kind of a low-key way. We have two new staff members at FINN, Victoria Bonham, who's our new special education teacher. She's replacing Margie Loubanco, who retired after twenty-three years, I believe, in the district, and Faith Richards, who is working as an educational support professional in our preschool. Our first two days back were incredibly productive, even though we were dealing with the intense heat. The first day was actually sponsored by Toms of Maine Monsoon Strength Deodorant. It was that hot. Our staff were in overdrive with paper towels. You should add that to the budget. We had a great PD for our staff. We had our service, our student service providers provide overviews of domain-specific things that they could do in the classroom to help students adjust in the areas of OT, speech and language, behavior, and academics, which was very well received. At our first parent coffee, I gave a general overview of FINN, talked about the importance of the homeschool connection, and gave parents opportunities for volunteering and how we're going to expand some volunteering opportunities this year. And then we have some new additions and upgrades at our school. We had some Boy Scout troops, Steve and I both had this over the course of the year, reach out to us for Eagle Scout candidacy projects. And Alex Scoudy, and I gave credit to him and mysouthrow.com, did a great job organizing a facelift for our courtyard. So he had a group of scouts, parents, kids come in to FINN on Saturday in June, and they revamped the landscape, the entire courtyard. It looks gorgeous. We want to try to maintain that. That's the first phase of our courtyard. And then through a very generous donation from SOS, and Chuck Raimondo, who does New England Recreation Group, we have two new pieces of playground equipment that are being installed out back in our playground. And so we're excited that these pieces are very developmentally appropriate for our preschool population and more conducive to the ADA requirements for special needs students. So we're excited that we're moving in that direction. And then finally, another SOS donation, a series of colorful banners, all highlighting the values that our CARE program and Open Circle program promote during the year. Acceptance, generosity, honesty, we have those hanging down on our hallways. So if you have a chance to stop by FINN, we would love to show you around and show you some of the new things. And lastly, I really have to give credit to our staff. They did a great job being positive, rallying, organizing themselves, greeting parents and kids with smiles during a very tough week. As Superintendent Johnson pointed out with the buses, it wasn't easy for us to start, but they did it, they rallied. So we're off to a good start at FINN, and so I'd like to give momentum.
Just want to echo Clayton's sentiments around Brian Fantoni and the great work that he did in preparing our facilities this summer. It was quite an undertaking, especially at Woodward with the building project taking place next door, but he did a great job working with Ed Mercer and Joe Mancini, our two custodians at Woodward, to get the building ready. It's in beautiful shape. If you attended the open house, you saw what a great condition and learning environment was created over the summer for our students. So extremely thankful to Brian and his hard work. Our new neighbors have been excellent neighbors so far with the public safety building. There's been some loud banging here and there, and some rocks being moved from one spot to the next. It's completely fascinating our students, but overall, it's been an experience. I have to commend the town in DPW for the communication. Over the summer, we were worried that access to the building could be quite difficult, but it turned out to not be an issue whatsoever. Karen Galligan at the town was helpful in having different pieces of machinery out and, you know, out of the parking area when necessary, as well as preparing the parking lot for opening day of school. It had been used as a staging facility, and everything was put back just the way we would have liked it. So thank you to her and her hard work. We've had several site meetings at Woodward and walking the campus just to see the scope of the work and how it'll impact our students, and I'm happy to say again that it really will have minimal impact on our students. It didn't really impact at all for opening day. Buses were able to come and go as best they could without any kind of interruption to traffic whatsoever. So again, I would just want to praise the town, DPW, and town manager for the communication and really the seamless work that was done over the summer. As far as exciting news happening around Woodward, so this year, we kicked off kind of like a virtual tour, where we had put up all sorts of instructional videos and tours of the building that students could access with parents online. That was a great way to kick off the year. It ties back into our PBIS and preparing our students for the expected behavior that happens around Woodward as it carries over from FINN and as students move on to NEary. So that was one thing we were extremely proud of. Parents can go online, access those expected behavior videos. It really just helps solidify, strengthen the homeschool connection, so parents know what to expect and what's being asked of their students. Another thing we're extremely proud of is our work with Chief Polis. We're starting a lunch program with the Southborough Police Department, where officers will come in weekly, talk with the kids, join them for lunch, walk the playground, directly tying into the work that takes place in NEary through the DARE program. So we realized that last year, during some rather stressful times, students really didn't know how to react seeing a police officer on our campus. We want to change that narrative and really show them that this is, that they're a positive member of our community and one that should be sought out for safety and guidance. So that's something that we're excited about also. We're in the process of transitioning one of our classroom spaces into a multipurpose science room, where we'll be conducting, we'll be using our Carolina Science units as well as using the design process and our root coding robots. So that's one thing we're also pretty excited about. And lastly, I'm happy to announce that two of our teachers had their first child this summer. Colleen Black and Jill Farrett will have had daughters at the end of the summer, so we're happy to grow our Woodward community by two.
Not enrollment?
No. That'll be a few years down the road.
Okay, thank you. So great start to the NEary school year as well. I did want to thank Mike Daigle, who is our new head custodian. He was our second shift custodian, now he's our new head custodian, and we brought Joey Sinclair on board as our second shift custodian. So they worked really hard, again with Brian Fantoni and all the support throughout the summer that they received from the new, the summer crew. We have a new fresh painted hallway and entrance, and it looks fantastic. They're working on the dining room now, too, so it'll be really a wonderful space. It's this very soothing blue color, so we've got a positive response to that. Also want to thank the tech department, because we had new phones put in over the summer, and it's been very smooth. I know behind the scenes, I'm looking at Julie, but I want to thank Julie and Galen Hammond and Andy Moriarty and all of the support staff, all the staff in the tech department, because really, they have been so proactive in addressing any concerns that we've had, and it's been a great thing to bring into our schools, at all of our schools, so thank you. We also have been working with one of our Eagle Scouts, or he's in the process of earning his Eagle Scout badge, Garrett Goodney. He's helping to expand our NEary courtyard to a greater learning space for us. They're built, he's building six new benches and a platform for teachers to teach from. We were also able to get some canopies that will put over that space, so that students can, and teachers can be protected while they're outside, receiving some great learning in a great space. So looking forward to that. We have five new ESPs that we brought on to our team this year, so we're welcoming Debbie Engel, Emma Decker, who's a NEary alumni, so that's exciting, working alongside her former fifth grade teacher, so that's great, Megan Keown, Erin Schuster, and Katrina Ballard. So we're very happy to have them on board, and a huge kudos to our teaching staff for their preparedness, working collaboratively to get the classrooms ready to receive our learners, and it's just, it was a great opening day, and so it's all in part because of the work that they put in during the summer. I want to thank RSOS for distributing our kids, our school kids, supply kits. It's a new company that we went with this year, and they just did a seamless job bringing in the kids, distributing them to the classrooms, so when teachers came in, everything was right there for them to access and distribute to our students. Our traditional NEary ice cream social, which typically happens on our first day back, because it was about ninety-eight degrees that day.
Cream soup.
Yeah, right. We thought, probably not the best day to have our ice cream social, so we rescheduled that to September twenty-sixth, so we're looking forward to that, meeting all of our families and having great conversations, as well as ice cream that won't melt on our playground. So hopefully, we're hoping the weather, weather's on our side. We continue to expand our science lab, which we brought into NEary last year, as Mr. Muji mentioned, with our Carolina Science Kits and our hands-on resources and materials. Our Friday farewell meetings this year have shifted focus a little bit. We're having multicultural moments, brought to us by Lisa Wagner, our librarian and Ho Cross, our ELD teacher, so we're looking forward to that. We're also continuing our partnership with the Senior Center. Our whole school read is going to be identified next week, and this Friday, we have our picture on the hill, which is our live human word picture that we all get together, staff and students, and this year, we will be spelling out the word hello. So we're excited about that. Choosing Kind continues to be a theme in our school, with Common Language tied to our CARE themes and our COTCaring cards. As Mr. Muji mentioned, DARE officers are an important part of our school and our community, and so Aaron Richardson is completing his DARE training, and he'll be partnering with Officer Landry this year to bring our DARE program to our fifth grade students. But he's been in getting to know the students, playing on the playground with them. He's great at basketball, the kids like, enjoy that, and he's also been in our dining room having lunch with both fourth and fifth graders. We continue to do our best to communicate as much as possible to our families. We use our virtual backpack, the NEary website, our TV in the foyer, Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, and we try to share as much of the learning and experiences that are going on at NEary with our, with our parent community. And today, we had our volunteer parent, principals coffee, and I invited some of the parents, and they came tonight, so thank you. It was a great, well-attended, and we are so grateful for our volunteer support and what they do for our school community. And last week was our curriculum night. It was a, it was a great success. Teachers worked really hard to prepare an overview of their curriculum and share students' work and expectations. And all in all, it's just a great start to the school year. So happy to have our hallways filled again with, with our students and our staff, so we're looking forward to another awesome year in NEary.
Awesome. Thank you, guys. Gary and I are here to share a little about Trotter's opening, echo a lot of what my colleagues have mentioned so far, but we won't get into a ton of that. What was different for Trotter is that Trotter was busy with students this summer. We had three special education programs happening for the majority of the summer, up to eight weeks, as well as the recreation camp. So typically, the recreation camp is at one of the other schools, but because of construction and other things moving, recreation camp was with us, and they were great tenants. They were awesome. They really were. They took care of the space, took care of the building, communicated with us frequently, and we really had a pretty seamless summer when it comes to all things related to those programs. New staff at Trotter. We only have two new educational support professionals that are joining our Castle program, Jacob Strout and Jen Guy, who just started this week. They joined us and have already gone right into business and are doing some good work. They come with a great deal of experience, too, which certainly helps. Like my colleagues mentioned, the heat was a little bit of a story. Heat and buses, I guess, was the start, but it really became something that people just embraced and did the most with as much as they could. Our first couple of days, we don't dive into classes, the bell doesn't ring in joint classes. We do do some community building, and this year, our students were introduced to their Generation Z. So our students are members of Generation Z, and Gary and I did a whole school presentation. Gary did a majority of all the work, but it was very fun presenting with him about all the stereotypes related to Generation lazy, of being lazy, screen-dependent, self-centered, and so on and so forth. But what really the evidence shows is that this group that's coming through aren't necessarily all these negative stereotypes, but are more global, more diverse in their thinking, and able to make better decisions, even in relations to things like substance abuse and things like that. The numbers are down for this Generation Z, so they're listening to something we're saying, at least. It might be for only eight seconds, because they got to go to the next thing, but regardless, good things are being captured. So for a while, we were getting So for a while, we were getting booed for telling them they were the worst generation ever. And then fun to come out, they have a lot of potential, their growth. So afterwards, they're like, okay, now we get it. But for the first half hour, I think we were struggling, right? Maybe, yeah. We were struggling for a bit. So we're off to a good start. Hopefully gave our students something to think about as we begin, begin the year. The other big initiative for this year that I want to share is Canvas. Canvas is a learning management system that Algonquin adopted last year with a ton of success under Julie's leadership. The middle schools, both Trotter and Melican, are adopting it this year for teachers and students. And really, the best way to summarize it, it's one-stop shopping for everything related to what's happening in the classroom. From resources to assignments, to a calendar, to a gradebook. It really has a lot of options and all of our teachers are using it. It's not just elective. It's something that all of our teachers are, are using, have embraced. Lot of hours of training and are going to be showcasing some of that tomorrow night at our curriculum night. So tomorrow night, we will be following a mini Tuesday schedule. And we'll do some speed dating every eight minutes, switch to the next class for about two hour period. But Canvas will be highlighted in many of the presentations. So that will be on display for parents tomorrow. And I think that wraps up the start of school. Anything else I missed? Is that it? Do well. All right, good. Well, thank you for the opportunity. Rate a roll.
Thank you.
Lot of great things. It's hard to imagine all of that taking place just in nine days back to the school year and so much more to follow. So again, thanks to our teachers. We had a district professional development day. They launched with such enthusiasm back to their classrooms on Wednesday, I think. And got some pretty good feedback from that. But it all does come down to what happens in our schools and what happens right in the classroom with our teachers. And clearly, all of what's taken place in nine, in nine days shows how prepared and excited they were to have the students back as well. And to our administrative team for making what takes place in our schools each and every day. So excited for students. And we do have some updates from central office because I think we've been pretty much there all summer. And lots of happen, has happened there too. Good, all good for our students. So I'm not sure, Marie, do you want to?
Sure.
We'll wrap up with Greg here.
We'll wrap up with Greg.
We'll wrap up with Greg.
Okay. So for student support services, our district and our school year does not end in June, as many of you know. Our summer was again bustling with activity for our Southborough students who continued their academic and social learning through our extended school year programming. ESY serviced sixty-one Southborough students. We offered seven programs and twenty-five classrooms across all of our, all of our districts, across four schools. Three of the schools were housed by Southborough students at Finn, Trotter, and Melican. Our principals and custodians were again so helpful in maintaining a beautiful learning environment for students and staff over the summer as they ready for school, the schools for the fall. And we're very thankful for their support and to be able to juggle the summer services and getting ready for the fall. We held the second annual transportation meeting with Vanpool and Aspen Valley Collaborative at the end of last year. Another, another request from parents who wanted to know more information about van transportation over the summer. It provided to be a helpful information session. And we will continue this practice for next summer due to the response that we received from parents. Our assistant special ed directors in the audience, Deb Lemieux and Erica Edstrom. And I traveled the district during the first few days of school. We visited with principals, teachers, and students. We stopped to visit our elementary therapeutic learning program at Lincoln Street School, which houses some of our Southborough students. And the Castle and Net Partnership Programs at Trotter, as Mr. Lavoie has already mentioned. These programs provide the necessary supports for some of our students to experience success in their learning. We witnessed students busily engaged in activities to start the new school year and all the programs that we visited. Our preschool program welcomed a new early childhood administrator, Jennifer Henry. And as well as all of our students, again, in one facility at Finn School for its second year. Screenings for some open slots were already held last week and our numbers continue to grow. We're currently reviewing the results of our coordinated program review that was held over the last two years. And it ended in June of this past year. And its purpose is to audit special education, civil rights, and English learners' regulations. And I'm happy to report that Southborough received a very favorable special education outcome. All timeline and regulation requirements were one hundred percent compliant in all of our schools, first time ever. We are proud of our staff and administrators because without them, the, the support and the good work that we do for students could not happen. We'll share more information with all of you once the final report is, is available. So it's been a wonderful start to the school year, as evident from our visits to all of our schools. Our teams were energized and prepared as they began the new school year. Thank you.
Can you, would you say that again about the favorable outcome in one hundred percent?
One hundred percent special ed regulation compliant in Southborough, all of our schools. And that is, how many SEs were those? How many indicators? About sixty-something indicators?
And record reviews.
And record reviews. We did, oh boy, how many record reviews? We did thirty-five and then another thirty?
Yeah.
So through all of those, one hundred percent compliant with all the special ed regulations.
That's a test. Congratulations.
Thank you. I think that's the first time.
First time.
So I have a quick question. Some really off the top of your head, I guess. What are two or three of the most difficult things to comply with, if you found the best? Not necessarily the number one, two or three, but just, you know, something.
I think maintaining the consistency across all schools and making sure that all of our teams are prepared. We, we offer professional development. We work on timelines with, with our staff. And it's really keeping ahead of things. So I think to answer your question, it's more timelines, to make sure that we're compliant. To make sure that we're giving the individualized attention to our students and developing the programs that are required to meet their individual needs. And I think we have to keep ahead of the curve all the time. Because there's always new, new populations of students coming in and out of the district. Students as they transition from school to school, making sure our programs are up to date. And that's all looked at in an audit.
So you mentioned making sure we're prepared. How do, how do they measure being prepared? Due to execution or?
They look at our, they look at student records to make sure that all of the timelines are adhered to. That the IEPs, we were told that our IEPs are some of the best written that they've ever seen. That anybody can just take an IEP and know what to do with a student in terms of their education. So that's looked at, as well as the programming in each individual building to make sure that we're supporting our students with mental health and various other disabilities.
Along with the professional help.
Along with the professional development, obviously, that we do with our staff.
It doesn't sound easy to comply with all that. So said the same, congrats.
Thank you. Thank you.
So I'm Rebecca Pellegrino, Human Resources Administrator. And the summertime is my busiest time of year. It's the, the period of time where we're kind of gearing up to get everyone back in the classroom so that we can make sure that all of our staff are in place. As the principals had already mentioned, we did have eleven new employees that we welcomed to the district over the summer. And that number is actually relatively low compared to other years. However, that does not mean that it was any less challenging because I think many of them occurred within the last few weeks before school started. So it was kind of like an obstacle, of course, where things were just being thrown at us at the last minute. And we had to dodge and evade. So these openings did occur due to either resignations or we did have some staff transfers into new positions. And Clayton did mention a retirement as well. So there was a mixture of reasons as to why those openings occurred. Over the past year, Human Resources has continued to review the processes that we have in place. And one of the things that we've really tried to do is move a lot of things for our staff onto the district website. So I really have expanded the use of that. We've worked with our associations to put forms that have been created together on so that staff can access them at any point in time. And if they have any questions, they know where to go to access that information. We've also expanded our use of the Infinite Visions system. We are using it now for greater tracking, to improve our efficiencies. And in fact, over the summer, we did coordinate another training for our accounts receivable module. So that will assist our financial coordinators in terms of tracking receivables from various parts of the district. And we also worked on our web portal, again with Tyler Technologies. And that web portal will be coming up at the beginning of the new calendar year. Where employees will be able to access their W fours, their pay stubs. They'll be able to make changes. They'll be able to, you know, see any education that is in our system and then work with us to make any changes that are necessary. So we're excited about that because that is something that we have been planning to roll out to our employees. This year, all staff have completed our annual mandatory trainings. And that includes trainings that have been compiled by our special education attorney for their review and sign-off, and also the state's conflict of interest law that is mandated by, that must be completed every, every other year. So we have been tracking that. And I'm actually in the process of working with Anna Scher, providing my, to provide some expanded trainings to our administrators as well for this upcoming school year. So it's been a busy summer and I look forward to a busier school year.
Question? I'm reading ahead, but I think it's relevant. So I noticed that a lot of special ed changes, you know, as far as the aides, which must present some human resources challenges in that transition, as well as maybe some supervisory challenges, I guess. Is that, is it kind of normal? We see a lot of transition in that situation most years, so it's not?
We hire, I mean, most of our special ed, we call them ESPs.
ESPs.
And they, they're very highly trained. Most of them have licensure. They, most of them have bachelor's degrees. Most of them are looking to get teaching jobs. So they're in the process of getting teaching jobs. This happened to be an extremely good year for our aides to find teaching positions outside of our district. So now we're just backfilling those. We did try and make sure that some of those aides were absorbed back in if we had teaching positions open. That's where we go first. But when we don't have that, obviously, they're, they're going to go out and look for their next career.
Thank you.
So I'm going to talk to you a little bit about technology. For the upcoming school year, the district technology team will be working hard to manage devices and infrastructure so that our students can learn those valuable skills like collaboration, communication, creativity, and critical thinking. Our instructional technology specialists at the Southborough schools. So we have Sammy Sordato here at Trotter, Amy Bruis at Neri, Amy Benford at Woodward, and EB Hall at Finn. Will continue to support both students and teachers with classroom technologies. As they have passed years, they provide instructional coaching to teachers. And they meet regularly with students to teach curriculum that includes digital literacy, internet safety, computational thinking, and also at the same time exploring some STEM education experiences. What helps to make all this great teaching and learning happen is the Southborough schools impressive ratio of students to devices. So from grades two through eight, we are one to one, which in some cases is even a little bit better than that. In grades pre-K through grade one, the ratio, that ratio is two to one. Andy Mariarty and TJ Karen, who are our district technology managers, worked very hard over the summer with the district tech team. Just making sure all these devices are updated and ready to go. As well as enrollment of all of our students into our online instructional programs. Just to make sure everything's ready to go for our teachers and students at the start of school year. In order to ensure the successful sort of one-to-one initiative that is going on. And as Keith mentioned at Trotter, we have successfully launched Canvas. So just echo to what Keith said, it's sort of this one-stop shopping. It's, it's all the digital tools that teachers use are located in one, one place. It really makes teaching and learning a lot easier. It makes communication and collaboration easier. And it helps the kids stay organized and get valuable, more valuable feedback. We are also piloting a new cloud-based internet monitoring system called GoGuardian. And this is a great digital classroom management tool. And it allows teachers to see what webpages students are on in real time. And it allows them to block certain webpages at the same time to help them to stay focused on, on the lesson. Our tech support team has a high level of technical knowledge and will be working hard to provide fast and reliable assistance to our teachers and administrators. Galen Hammond is Southborough's new systems admin. And he, along with the tech specialist, John Wicken, are creating a schedule to maximize their ability and to just best meet the needs of all the four schools.
The grand finale.
The grand finale. That's a lot of pressure.
Just one question about GoGuardian before that. Do the kids know about this?
So right now at Trotter, we have four teachers who are trying it out and those kids know about it.
Yes, they do.
Yes, they do.
He's not quite the grand finale. Rhoda's over in the corner. She's going to come.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity of sharing with you this evening. I'm Rhoda Webb, Director of English Language Education. We had yet another wonderful summer for our English learners. Our, we have a three-week program, a two-week program. Our incoming first through eighth grade come to the two-week program and it is held in August. We had a total of twenty-eight students from Algonquin, sorry, not Algonquin, Southborough attend. And I mentioned Algonquin because as always, we form a community and bring Northborough, Southborough, and Algonquin together. And we choose the staff that teaches in our summer program. We choose an overarching theme. We look at our standards and areas where we want to develop the English language for our students. And then we were teaching it in developmentally appropriate ways. This year, we looked at, this summer, we looked at the standards of math and social studies and decided that we wanted to develop the language of business. Specifically, math in the younger children with money. We bought very realistic fake money for all our students. And so a lot of activities were done first through third grade. Learned the, about the causes of choice, saving. Playing interactive games with money, buying and selling services and goods. And then fourth and fifth grade added to those concepts by building a budget. And what a budget means. And so once they had, out of their paycheck, rent had been taken out. And all their monthly expenses, they were left with about a hundred dollars. And they had to decide how to use that a hundred dollars for self-care and food. So they became very good at looking at flyers from stores, learning the language in the flyers and how they were going to spend their money. They also developed, our culminating project this year, every year we bring everybody together. So we're interacting multi-age. Our culminating project was Market Day. So our fourth and fifth graders this year were designing games that they could offer to the, to the buyers. And the buyers were our younger students. And before their games were approved, we had a team of our SHARC teachers who were deciding whether they would invest in their product or not. And if they, their language was persuasive enough to convince them to invest in their company with their product. Middle school and high school looked at the concepts in depth of entrepreneurship. We had an entrepreneur come to us. We didn't go out on a field trip this year. A bi-cultural entrepreneur. The students were thrilled when they heard the language that they had been learning about business because he was using that language and talking about his successes and his challenges. So middle school and high school did market research among the students that we had in our, in our summer program. And then developed products. They actually made products. Did a market research cost, what they would make, what profit they would make. The expense that it, it was costing them to produce that product. And then they had to come up with a very persuasive comment, or very persuasive language on how they would sell their product to others. on how they would sell their product to others. And then at Market Day, that's when everything came to fruition. There was a lot of energy that day. Everybody had a role to play. Students had a budget. Everyone went with their cash to spend and decided if it was a need or a want. And everyone went home with that money to be able to take it home and continue to use it at home and play with it. I am very grateful for the start of commits. This is a collaboration of everyone coming together and designing something that's going to be meaningful to develop the English language in our students. And our surveys that went out, both to our students and to our parents, were very positive. So we're looking forward to another school year, and I look forward to coming back later on in the fall to give you an update of the languages in our district and who our English learners are. Thank you.
So as you can tell, the work over the summer does not stop. I'd like to commend the Southborough educators for their participation in many of the programs that took place, whether they were running the programs or teaching in the programs. We also had many, many teachers participate in professional learning opportunities, whether it was engaging in learning our learning management system, Canvas, or learning about our world-class instructional design and assessment program. We also hosted a responsive classroom training that brought together educators across North England, and so that was a great, great experience. And a lot of work from teachers around planning and preparing for this academic year. This summer, we also implemented our innovative approach to professional learning, which is new this year, which provides differentiated and flexible professional learning opportunities. So we had about 40 educators begin that process, and from the sounds of it, from some of the anecdotal information, it's been a huge hit so far, and we're looking forward to sharing more information about that program with you. The learning of the NASA team also took place over a two-day retreat where the leadership team came together, and we focused our learning on teaching and learning, and set goals for the year-round instruction. And we also spent some time learning more about the regulatory environment and the changing legal landscape, and we had one of our attorneys present to us. So it was a great year to kind of frame the year and set some rules for the leadership team. And then on August 28th, teachers gathered, the 10 schools, three districts, one community of learners. We gathered at Algonquin, and we had a guest speaker, Dr. Robert Brooks, present, and his message was really important, and I think timely, and he spoke about the power of a charismatic adult in a student's life, and influence educators have, and impact educators have on students. And we have a choice of what type of adult and what type of influence we have on students. So it was very timely. He talked about the making positive connections with students and the power of that. So overall, it was a very busy summer, and I think, I'd also like to commend the principals. It's amazing. I don't think there's any other organization that stops most of its operation in June, shuts down for a little bit, and then starts up again in late August. And the amount of work it takes to start up an operation, the i's that are dotted, the t's that are crossed, the planning, the detail work, is tremendous, and honestly, I don't think we could have a better team of leaders to make sure that happens well for our students when they return. So a great summer, and looking forward to a great year.
I just want to echo their thoughts, and I think we've all shared them, as we've talked about our own staff, and within our schools, our teachers within each building. I also think that it's so very important that we have these types of conversations at the beginning of the school year, because it really does act as a springboard for the conversations that we're going to have throughout the next, over the next 10 months, about budget and programming and budget priorities, some of which we're going to undertake today, and begin those conversations, because that, in fact, does influence, to a larger extent, what our budgets will look like in just, well, this year, two months from now. We have a rigorous budget calendar. And so to hear all of the great work and to want to continue that work in each and each of our schools, also to continue to support the kinds of goals that we had identified in our strategic plan, is so very critical to our growth and our innovative practice. So even though it takes a little bit of time, the clock ticks that first night, but it ticks in such a very powerful way, because it will then provide the support and really the, the foundation for our conversations that will continue over the next several months. And we'll hear more as every principal presents their school improvement plan. We'll be able to dig a little bit deeper into what's happening in each school when the plans are presented. So thank you all for being here tonight.
Can I just make a comment?
Sure.
I just want to say, I've only been at two of the four schools this beginning of the year, but I just, I just want to say how much I, I really appreciate all the positivity and enthusiasm that everybody brings to the beginning of the year, because it's obviously a lot of work and starting it all up and getting everybody adjusted, but it's, it's evident to me, anyway, just the, the enthusiasm and, and how hard everybody is working to kind of make things go well. So I just, I think it's wonderful. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I think Katura was in the audience when Dr. Brooks spoke. Talked about charismatic adults with positivity. That's exactly the theme for the year.
Thank you all for coming. It's really helpful to hear all this, so I appreciate you being here, and all the work you do. With that, we'll move on to legislative update.
I have two.
I got nothing.
Okay. I have something. Last year, we had a very interesting conversation with Carolyn Dykema, and Carolyn actually asked if we would be interested in forming somewhat of a subgroup along with her to talk about innovative practices that are taking place in our schools and find ways to have our legislative branch kind of support those initiatives. She reminded us of that conversation, I think, and circled back with us, and we're trying to figure out a way to implement and start that very active subgroup. I know we've shared some dates and times that might work for us, and, and actually, Southborough was the catalyst for that conversation, and I think the other districts will join in, because together, we can all make a difference in terms of the things in the bills that move forward, or the bills that move forward before the House and the Senate. And a little bit later, we're going to talk about one of those successful initiatives, which actually I don't think would have been realized if it hadn't been the activism that takes place in our school committees. We finally were able to determine that circuit breaker was increased, and we had a lot of conversations about that. And I know that it's, it's going to be further down, we talked about the budget, but in fact, that was one of our legislative updates that was ongoing, and it's been ongoing for years. So in the end, with the recent fourth quarter payment that was made to the districts, and it sort of just arrived, it wasn't a fanfare about the fact that circuit breaker had actually gone back to the 72% funding level, but it did. And so in that fourth quarter, we received, every district received a little bit of bump in their circuit breaker funding, which will allow us to have some safeguards in place for this year, should we have, or should we incur unpredicted special education costs. So that was huge. And it was funded at a 60% level. Interestingly enough, we don't really yet know what FY19 is going to be funded at, so we might be still having that, you know, conversation again about returning us to 72% level, but at least we did realize that in the fourth quarter. And I think in large part, that's because of what we had heard along the way, that what the state really does is wait to see what kind of funds are unexpended, because there's an opportunity to apply for those funds. And if people don't, it's money to return back to the cities and towns. So I think we benefited from that. So that would not have happened if the school committees and, you know, the organizations had kept the pressure on, to, to put that and to keep that first and foremost in front of our, our senators and representatives. It does make a difference. And we did get a new I-N-O school safety coming up. The governor, in collaboration with the Massachusetts Police Departments, have issued a new memorandum of understanding. Chief Wallace and Chief Liger from Northborough, myself, along with some additional folks on the Safe School Readiness Planning Committee, were in the throes of re-authorizing our memorandum of understanding. Southborough never actually had one signed. Algonquin did, and Northborough's was in format form but not signed. And we had heard that they were going to issue some new language, so to wait until this came out. There were, there was also a lot of conversation through the governor's office this summer about some funding coming our way for Safe School Readiness Planning. There are, there's a lot of language still, but I haven't really seen anything definitive. Certainly will capitalize on that if it's, there's some grant writing opportunities so that we can continue to upgrade our schools and, and provide professional development and so forth for our schools. That's, that's what I have for legislative updates. I'm sure there'll be a lot more to come in the upcoming months.
Yeah, actually, the committee that we're looking at forming, it's more than just innovative practices, although that was one thing that Carolyn and Alice Peish, co-chair of the Joint Committee on Education, they're interested in that kind of thing. But it's also just trying to get other school committee members from surrounding towns together and come up with sort of, you know, some issues that we all care about, because we're all in similar situations, and hopefully raise our profile at the statehouse. We're still in the formative stages of all that, but hopefully it'll come together. I think that brings us to all business and the public safety building update.
So we've touched upon the next several agenda items with the principals' updates, which is great. The public safety building project is still underway, and they circle back with us. Jason Melonowski sent an email out just a little bit ago, asking, you know, how the start of our school was, and is there anything they could do to provide some additional support? And Steve's been very, very much a part of that process, actively involved all along the way. We did, in fact, meet about four times, had a very lengthy meeting on the steps of Woodward School, I remember, with the project manager and Mark Purple, Karen Galligan, to discuss and to make sure that the access to the public school building throughout this construction period really did not impact school life at all, whether it's folks in the construction, on the construction crews, or just golfers who are still accessing that facility, which is hard to believe, they're still golfing while bulldozers are bulldozing, and dynamite is, you know, going off and getting the kids excited at Woodward School. And so from, through some very great work together, it was decided that they would build a new access road for the golfers, so they wouldn't be needing to move across or on Woodward property. So that was a great thing. We've been working with them very collaboratively as they need to continue their work to tie into Woodward's line where necessary for monitoring the septic system that they're putting in place. I was pleased to see that they very much are mindful of our school calendar, so when we're not in session, they have managed to schedule some of the more, you know, significant on-campus work that they need to do to connect into the public safety building. A good example was Monday. They knew we were not in session, and that was the day they pumped the septic, which happens to be underneath the flagpole. And so we're circling back to make sure that that doesn't need to happen again, or are they going to disrupt that asphalt? Because perhaps then they can pave it back and make it part of our paving project for us as part of that. So it's been some great conversations. I think one meeting, Steve, we had probably 10 folks. Chief Mara was there, gosh, everyone from the town, and that was when we were looking at the Woodward electrical panel, because they need to temporarily hook into that panel. Some ongoing conversations about the installation of a phone line, and so it's just good conversations that are taking place, and I think they're being incredibly respectful, as are we of our new, of our new neighbors. We're pleased, that'll probably be the number one field trip site for all of our Woodward students, and everyone will want to be a police officer or a construction engineer by the time this project's done, because they get to peek out the windows.
Chief Wallace did confirm that that would be an option for us, is taking it.
Yes.
Once it almost concluded.
And he promised not to bill us for the field trip, I think, in the conversation.
And I'll say that at no point has work been taken place while students are in session. Like Superintendent Johnson said, they're doing it on the weekends, they're doing it after hours or before school starts, so taking advantage of some days that our students aren't in session. So we're, that's, my hope is that that will continue, so that if there is any kind of disruption, if they, anything does happen that's unexpected, that it won't affect our students directly.
About the dynamite?
You know, I haven't heard any dynamite. That might be an exaggeration.
I was just using explicit terminology.
Definitely picking up big rocks and throwing them down.
But they are moving some pretty good-sized poles, they're saying. We were a little surprised.
For a while, the piles moved from here to here, to here. I'm sure it's all part of a bigger plan.
I think they're moving around the golf carts, actually, to be traveling the roadway for them.
If I find Jimmy Hoffa's body.
School safety, we have an update, and actually, I think Jess was at the presentation on the Tuesday after we dismissed from the school year last year. We had a presentation, and actually, it was just really a gathering. Northborough and Southborough community members have formed their own sort of safety study group, and we agreed that we would work in partnership with one another. That evening was an evening for just conversation about their concerns and to gather some input. Chief Liger from Northborough was there, and Mike Bissett, Detective Bissett, who's the school resource officer at Algonquin, Kevin Landry, who's our school resource officer here, was unable to come, but he was definitely there in spirit. I think we were there, the lights almost went out, we were there probably for about four hours. It almost felt like a living room, and we were just sitting and having a conversation about a variety of topics. But one of the outcomes of that work with this group is that we were able to bring the Sandy Hook Promise to Algonquin the Tuesday before we opened school for a presentation about what they have to offer us as we continue to provide for a safe school environment for our students, not just about practices, policies, and protocols, but rather, how can we make every student feel that they are a part of the school life? And I liken it somewhat to Rachel's challenge, where just, you know, go up to someone after Columbine and just say hello. And as Kathleen mentioned, you know, just say hello is really part of, one piece of the Sandy Hook sort of program offerings. So what we, how we approached this was to invite all of our guidance counselors, our school adjustment counselors, our, basically our professionals who support the social-emotional well-being of our students by profession or job title. We all do that every day, but to have them come in and just to listen to the presentation, there's a copy of the material that they left with us. There's a lot of different pieces of this program offering. It is free to school districts, and we wanted to get some feedback from our professionals to see whether this is something that we wanted to embrace holistically, whether there were pieces of this that already support our work. And a brief survey went out to all of the participants, and so we look forward to the information and the feedback from them. But it is something that we intend to partner with, we're just, at this point, not sure if it's the entire program or if it's really pieces of that that will support and enrich what we already have in place. There are two things that are important, or two things that are very much of interest. They do provide an anonymous tip hotline, something that we've been talking about with both police departments, and it's part of their offerings, if you will. It's foundation-based, so there are no grants that are necessarily needed to be written to access some of this material. And so I'm hopeful that by next month, we will have some updates in terms of where we're going with this. It was a very busy Tuesday. The offer to attend was extended to our administrators, but we also knew that we were going to be circling back and having some more conversations about whether or not and how this fit into sort of our curriculum of social-emotional health and also the safety readiness activities that take place in our schools. So Steve mentioned PBIS, Positive Behavioral Interventions, and we do have those in our schools now. So how can this enrich that work? So we were, we were really pleased, and I think this was one of the, the requests, if you will, of this group, that we take a look at this, and we were able to do that. So I also think that speaks well of the relationship that we're forming with, with this group as well as we move forward. And more to come from that. It starts with hello. Yes, that was, okay. So that's actually a national, a nationwide initiative sponsored by the Sandy Hook Promise, which is taking place within the next couple of weeks, so we hope that more schools may decide to, to join in that as well.
Questions on that? 2018-19 subcommittee, liaison assignments, if we're able to, yeah, agree. Just for distribution.
Right. And I'm sure we'll be adding some study groups as the year moves on, as interests present themselves. Also in your packet is a request that the committee take a vote on the summer payroll warrants. It is a matter of practice that we have one person signing the warrants over the summer, but they have asked us to take a formal vote, so they have, this is a matter of record.
but they have asked us to take a formal vote, so they have this as a matter of record. So it's just really voting on the fact that we have one person who signs the warrants over the summer. It isn't a problem. They just need a vote for their record to indicate that that's what we have, that's what we've done for practice. And as we know, we looked into that and it's what we've been doing for years. We just need to take a vote on that.
So what is the actual motion?
We vote that there would be a primary signer of payroll and warrants during the summer months and that any member may serve as an alderman. I would just vote into record the last sentence.
Can I just so move that? Can I so move?
As you can.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Great, thank you.
unanimous? Superintendent's report to the committee, update on summer projects.
I think we've touched upon just about each of the projects. We talked about communications and the phone, the phone telecommunications system. A massive project, phenomenal work by the tech folks, particularly Andy Matarriati and TJ Karen. We had an occasion to, as we were moving about the campuses this summer, watch the vendor Metropolitan Communications work collaboratively with our custodial crew. And I've never seen such a happy camper group of vendors coming in to do installation in ninety degree weather. And it was clean, it was smooth. And for us to say it seemed like it was just done so quickly and rapidly probably doesn't do justice to the amount of work and planning that needed to go into that. But one of the great things about our communication system is that it really has increased our safe school readiness functionality because from any phone you can page, you can contact. And that prior to this, that wasn't the case. Lots of times they had to go through the main office, they didn't have nine-one-one access. So one of the, one of the concerns and one of the features of this new installation was actually to enhance our safety call alerts, not only within the campus but outside the campus. And so we do have that now. And thank you to the administration for supporting the training that was necessary. We have a few little bumps along the way with scheduling, the phone, the bells and some of that, but I think it's being worked out. And speaking of bumps and bumps, I don't know if anyone's noticed, but they actually don't, there's no longer an airborne reality when you come over bumps. And I want to thank the town, Karen Galligan and the DPW crew for supporting that work. We were able to work out sort of a no-cost option for that installation, which is great. Neri was scheduled to have their new humps installed, but the time just did not allow for that to happen with the weather conditions and so forth. You may have also noticed that the Woodward driveway enhancements have not yet taken place. From all change comes some good. And in this case, knowing the conversations we had this summer about access to the camp, the public safety building from Woodward, it may actually be fortuitous that it takes place at the end of the year because we're not really sure still what kinds of access or tie-in to the Woodward School might be necessary. So it's good that that finished before we start, you know, adding new asphalt to the Woodward driveway that might end up having to be uprooted once laid down because of that. So there is no cost escalator. We spoke to the vendors early, had a couple of meetings with them. And what we're planning to do is to have all that work done in June because the public safety building is slated to be complete as well. So that work will be done and our work will be complete. So it's nice to know that there's no increase in cost, even though we're extending it to June. And Steve, I think it was safe to say that everyone around the table that day just went, oh, thanks. Because they thought, I think, that we were going to be insistent that it start. Part of the other problem was the weather just was not agreeing with us and it delayed a lot of their projects. So that would have meant that we would have started, started construction two weeks before school opened. And they would not have been able to finish the project. And that would have just been a disruptive force. And speaking about future disruptive forces, we're somewhat pleased that the anticipated busing issues for Woodward did not happen because they managed to do a lot of the road repair and construction before school was back in session. And the Main Street project, which will be somewhat of a concern because I don't even know if I want to say this, the buses will probably be rerouted to go around that work, is slated to start in the spring now. So we'll have time to have those conversations with the bus company around changes that might need to be made because of the construction on Main Street. And initially, we thought it was all going to happen at once. So that's good news. Also, speaking of Woodward, and would ask your approval tonight to consider this. Clayton and Kathleen mentioned the Eagle Scouts. They've been busy and they've also been busy at Woodward. And I'm going to turn this over to Steve to share the good news. But SEF had actually funded a grant for some exciting work at Woodward School. And because it's about to be complete, they would like us to consider naming this. I'm going to, it's like the Academy Awards, you don't want to open the envelope yet, right? But naming this, and Steve will continue. But we do have a policy, which is F-100 about naming facilities. It really mirrors the garden, the outdoor garden space. So I would ask that after Steve shares his good news, we consider allowing the naming to continue with the opening of the, and the celebration of the work that's being done at Woodward. So I've left you in suspense long enough, right? Steve, take it away.
Can I just, it's a two-part project taking place at FIN as well? So the naming would need to take place at FIN as well? So it's a two-part.
Okay. Thank you.
There's no way I can make this all suspect.
I know, I built you it up. It's like dynamite, right? It's awesome.
So last year, I think a year and a half ago, SEF had awarded a grant for Storywalk, which was basically, this Storywalk project comes from Mount Pilgrim, Vermont, where it's a way to lay out a book in multiple frames around a particular area. Maybe it's a walking trail or pathway. And it allows students to interact with the text, reading with loved ones out in the community and following the book from page to page, from station to station. SEF would like to honor former principal James Randall with this, with this project. And they had proposed naming it or honoring him with some sort of plaque that would, that would be displayed on the first piece. Back to, the first frame, I should say, is like a title page almost. Back to the work that was done, Alex Forrest, who was a former Woodward student and FIN student, I believe, is an Algonquin High School senior now. And he did a great job coordinating efforts, working with the DPW to dig the holes, to supply the gravel that would fill the holes. He worked with Troop One out of Southborough to really bring this project to life. So I just want to make sure that he is recognized for all of his hard work and efforts. Lori Weiner has been an integral staff member as far as coordinating efforts between SEF and Alex. So I applaud all of them for all their hard work. And I guess the question is the approval of dedicating it to former principal James Randall.
And if I can assure the committee, there are five steps. We actually unknowingly completed steps one, two, three and four. And that is really just having folks from the community participate in this and then suggest some names that might be submitted for this. It's very similar to the outdoor garden dedicated to Charles Kron. So, and I think it would look similar to that as well. So the fifth step is actually, in order to be selected, a name must receive a majority vote from the school committee. And, you know, with Jim being such a much beloved principal at both FIN and Woodward, it would seem to be a logical name to move forward for a vote of consideration.
What are steps one through four again?
One is to, the superintendent appoints a committee inclusive of school staff. Sounds like Lori Weiner's school staff administration, parents and community members, SEF. And the part that wasn't there is a school committee member was to be involved. But I don't know if anyone on the school committee was part of SEF or, you know, knowledgeable about the project over the last two years. But I would suggest somebody must have been aware of it somewhere along the way. So maybe we, there's that one piece. Two is student, school, staff and residents could submit nominations to this Step One committee. Three, three names, no more than that, to the superintendent. We have Jim and Jim, same name but in two places, so we're just missing a third. And then four is after the superintendent approves the nominations, I can't think of anyone more worthy of an honor, forwards them to the school committee. And here we are at step five, for the school committee to vote to accept.
Okay.
So we'll move that we accept Jim Randall as the designate for his honor?
At FIN and Woodward?
At FIN and Woodward.
Yeah. Okay. Second.
Any discussion? I would agree that Jim is more than worthy. You know, he really, he did an incredible job here at both schools in a time when we really needed him to, when Mary Ryan retired and took over both schools for a number of years. And it was, you know, just a great thing that he did that, so.
And he was so passionate about literacy. He really was a member of the Reading, the Massachusetts Reading Association and they had many different meetings at FIN and really worked on a state level to improve literacy. And so what better honor than to have Storywalk in his name, so.
Good point. All in favor? unanimous?
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the capital plan.
Capital plan update.
I'd like to know about the path behind Trotiere and Neri.
So I mentioned, everyone's sung praises of Brian Fantoni, who's done such an amazing job and he will be here next month to speak to that. We had a conversation last week and that was one of my questions, how is the path going? And he said that he was going to go out there this week just to make sure it was clear and that we had done some of the work that was suggested last year. But Karen Galligan also indicated to us last year, when we talked about this, that she had to bring some machinery down there to actually clear that path. I think she's been a little bit busy with the public safety building. So when Brian, actually Brian took some much deserved vacation time. I don't know how he made it through the summer without all of that and the heat and whatnot, but he did. And that's on the list to make sure that it's closed. Because that, we know that's a definite concern. To close the project, in other words, clean it.
Oh, 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 okay.
The way that we had talked about.
To give a timeline for that, or?
So Brian will probably be back tomorrow morning, actually. And we'll, we'll make sure that he circles back. It's on his list of things to do. And if the new machinery or the machinery that needs to be lined up, we've got to coordinate that with Karen. So it's not forgotten, it just is on the list.
Okay. So the paving wasn't done or anything like that yet?
No, the paving, there was paving done at Trotiere. In addition to the humps and bumps, the town actually did some paving on the entrance road up to Trotiere and then slightly up to the parking lot. But I don't think they've gone through the pathway.
They did not. They did not.
Yep, absolutely. Update next month. Yes, we actually had a subcommittee capital plan meeting yesterday morning. That was probably longer than we thought. Paul and Roger attended. And what you have in front of you is the FY twenty draft of a capital plan. We have two versions. In conversations with Brian and actually Brent, Trotiere joined in in the conversations as well. We really did a very close analysis of what we had been carrying on the capital plan for some time and thought about what is actually capital and what should be routine maintenance and repair. So it's in the, I think it's in a handout today, a very colorful handout. So what we basically did was we pulled some of the items at least off nineteen and twenty into the facilities plan. You know, for Brian, this is new. He's our, he's getting his feet wet with this capital plan and maintenance plan. And so really didn't extend beyond twenty. But if you look at the maintenance plan and then you look at the capital plan, you'll see that some of those items in the maintenance plan really shouldn't be on the capital because they're routine maintenance kinds of things. Things with four buildings, we're always going to be replacing carpeting. We're always going to be painting. We're always going to be doing some annual refreshing of the school. And so to have them part of the capital plan really didn't make too much sense. So rather, what we did was really dug deeply into what was in the plan and move forward with what we suspect will be our major investments in the next several years. Being mindful that our capital plan is not really, doesn't always translate into warrant articles. We've been very fortunate to be able to fund a lot of this capital work and maintenance work through our facilities revolving account and also budget. So one of the things that we're hoping to do this year is to budget out, we've done this for two years now, but to continue the process of budgeting out our revolving account so that it never goes to zero. But we actually are planful of what we're going to expend from that revolving account and what we're going to spend from budget. An excellent example of both is our discussions around the telecommunications system upgrades, whether that was going to be operational and revolving. And as the budget expended this year, we realized that we had opportunities to spend it, to expend it from operational to a great extent and then some in revolving if necessary. The Woodward project, we budgeted that Woodward project out about two years ago as we were looking forward to how we were going to expend those revolving funds. So the Woodward project will be expended wholly from the revolving funds that we have set aside. And they will be there in June. Meanwhile, we're getting additional funding in from rentals. And that's what we'll be looking at expending for some of the capital in nineteen and twenty. You'll also note that it's a little bit more colorful than usual. As part of our conversation, we talked a lot about what are some great things that we can do in collaboration with the town if we can time it accordingly? A perfect example was the humps at Trotiere. Originally, that was a cost to us. That was in our capital plan last year. The Neri humps was added as we moved along. And through some conversations with Mark Purple and Karen Galligan and a little bit of discussions about what we were doing at Woodward that they're not doing to improve the Woodward campus, they were able to make those improvements to us or for us at no cost. So we didn't expend any funding for that, including the paving of Trotiere up to the point where they paved. So the colorful brown or orange, I think Roger referred to that as orange, are opportunities for us to partner with the town and have, you know, some good timing so that while they're doing some significant projects, like the Main Street project, we might have an opportunity to partner with them to do some of the paving that we have on tap. So just some active dialogue. We will be presenting this to financial advisory very shortly. And I think for them to see that we're cognizant of the importance of always being mindful of what the town's doing and what we're doing and working together. Example, because Karen was going out for a very sizable asphalt bid for the work that the town was doing, we were able to receive that favorable bid pricing as well for some of the projects that we were going to do, like the Woodward project. So it's just a matter of forming a partnership. The green is the Trotiere track resurfacing, which was approved at town meeting. Also, they'll be doing some work while not scheduled yet at De Petrie Field, which borders Neri School. And so as we think about the driveway repairs that might need to take place at Neri, that might be an opportunity to have conversations with the town about, you're going to be right there. You know, this is an opportunity for us to do the work. So it's difficult to sort of say it's going to happen in May of two thousand nineteen because we're not sure really what the town has. But just to continue that, that awareness on their side and ours, I think will benefit both, both folks. And then the blue, and this is really what the town is most concerned about, is potential warrant articles because of the size of the work that's going to need to take place. There's no way we can embrace that or include that in any way in our revolving. It's just too much money. The one thing that is true, though, is these numbers have been carried for years as a flat number. We are looking at partnering with John Parent from the town, on the town side, and Karen to get someone in to do some actual pricing of these projects and get some real numbers. There are ways out in terms of our capital plan, but we need to refresh these numbers. If the town isn't planning to do that, then we're going to, we're planning to issue an RFP to have someone come in and actually take a look at these. to have someone come in and actually take a look at these projects. Part of the dialogue that has been ongoing with the roofing projects is the feasibility of whether or not, if and when we move forward with solar, the roof would be folded into that project. So to some extent, it's good that it's out there in terms of need because that will give us time to fully vet that possibility. I mean, obviously, if that happens, then that's a great timing to put the new roof on at the same time. But, you know, those things are still being discussed. So the other two things that I would like to point out is how much we've already done in FY '18. Those, the telephone systems have been replaced in all of our schools, right? So we have, we are projecting, and there's the Woodward project, that 135 for driveway enhancements this year, which will be completed. And we do have the set aside dollars for that. So everything in '18 is paid for and installed. If you look at FY '20 as we plan for next year, and by the way, we expect that everything in the FY '19 column will be completed this year. If we look at the FY '20, you'll notice that unless I'm, my bifocals are playing tricks on me here. So in the security upgrade column, we have some upgrades in '20 and '21. We have the pricing for those and they are actual facility upgrades that we would want to be doing in all of our schools at the same time. And that's the challenge, too, what we do and when we want it to have happened in all four at the same time. You know, we don't, we don't talk a lot about safety in public session, but we, we do know that over time, the requests have been made for cameras and additional dual locking systems and those kinds of things are what we're looking into. And those kinds of things would probably be reflected, most reflected in these security upgrades over the next two years. And so I think that, that speaks volumes of just how much we've been mindful and listening to folks who have come to us and with us at various forums that we've had. We had a number of them last year and we got some great info from parents. And some of their suggestions are being realized through this plan in the presentation. It's, it's a very realistic plan at this point. The town financial advisory asked for a 10-year projection. Difficult to do sometimes, but we tried to get as close to the 10. We fell short by four years, but, you know, so much of it's going to depend on what we do in the earlier years of this plan. This is very much a draft. And we haven't looked at the town's budget calendar yet. But it's, it's ambitious. So we'll be talking a little bit about that shortly. It was important, I think, for us to take a look at this plan because the town tonight, because the town is very much looking to move forward. Certainly, they're looking for long-term planning of warrant articles, you know, 10 years out for their own planning purposes. That's why we want to just freshen up these numbers. The boiler, just to give you an example, it is an oil burner at Finn. Just replaced one in another school, not in Southborough, and the cost is closer to $450. So that's why we need to sort of really refresh these numbers. And, and that's behind the path, also on Brian's list, things to do, is to get someone in to give us better pricing. But they've assured us, financial advisory has assured us that they appreciate the draft format of these, of these documents. So we, we could vote to accept them tonight and meet with Finn Financial Advisory. We could keep them in draft form until after our first meeting with financial advisory. I think some of the things that they're looking at is in draft form as well. And they felt comfortable with us having a draft rather than a final vote in capital plan. But it's a will to be made.
I'm fine with draft. I'm fine with draft. Losing possibility.
And they, and they want more from us than, you know, than what we have here, so. Okay, great. Enrollments are in your packet. We are well within class size range, I believe, in all of our classes. I think there's a copy of the class size policy in your handouts this evening. The only class that might be a little slightly below, because the cap is for the, minimum class size number is 16 and that's in kindergarten. But I would say to Clayton, Clayton, wow, you were almost spot on on your projections.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's the algorithm that we use.
Impressive. So that's where we are. We're actually, I did hand out the NESDEC. NESDEC had us at K-8 for '18 and '19 at 12:49. So we're about 56 below. And if we look at our projections that we had for FY '19, we're actually slightly up from our projections. So we'll be watching over this as we move forward. I will say, based on the budget calendar, we'll be looking at projections for next year very, and probably the next meeting. Because we'll, we'll need those for, for budgeting purposes. Also, in your packet, this is something that does not happen too often, but if you look at where we ended up on the expenditure report, we are at zero. And we are at zero in a couple districts. So basically, that means we, we closed spot on what we were budgeted. Lot of, lot of folks worked on that, financial coordinators over the summer in collaboration with Brian Valentine and, and his team at Townhouse. So we were, I know that isn't always what the town would like, manager would like to see. I think they'd like to see a few dollars left. But from my standpoint, I was ecstatic. So there you have it. We spent what, what was budgeted. And again, you know, great work by a lot of folks to, to move this to this point. So this evening, of course, we are audited. We would need a vote to accept, to approve until audited.
I move we approve the fiscal year '18, the final fiscal year '18, 2018 budget as submitted until audited.
Second?
Second, Victor. Any discussion? All in favor?
And just when we finished '18, there we have '19. And Paul was right behind. And so this is, this is the first of the new year. And we encumbered a lot this year. We did purposeful encumbrances so that we had a, you know, over the summer, so that we had a better feel for where we are in terms of our balance, even though it's this early in the school year. So you'll note that there's a lot of encumbrances in there. That, that is not that we expended them, but we know that those dollars are spoken for. So basically, they're spoken for, in the most cases, their salaries. So now what do we have left? And that, that's very helpful as we move through the budget season. So that's where we are right now. And again, first one of, of the year. So would ask please a vote to approve until audited on the FY '19 budget.
I move we approve the fiscal year '19 budget as submitted until audited.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor? unanimous?
I think, we're losing the crowd over there, so I'm going to go a little bit back there. Kindergarten, very exciting. This was the second year of reductions. As discussed, we were able to reduce tuition yet again by $950. So we're at $2,000 in two fiscal years, which is exciting for our parents. There was a letter that was sent out in August to our incoming kindergarten parents. And with Clayton's expert algorithm, it will be very helpful then if that holds true to predict further reductions. I believe we are on track. It's a little premature, but we could realize free tuition at the beginning of next year, depending on what this year's revolving account funds yield in the budget process. So again, almost the same conversation last year, this time, being mindful, being watchful. But we should have some good indications by January or February this year. Always reluctant to say too much too soon because things could change. But we're, we're making some, we're on track. Budget priorities, FY '20 budget priorities are in your packet. I will also say that Southborough circuit breaker actual dollar increase, removing to 60 to 72%, is a, was $71,253. And that's safely tucked away in our circuit breaker revolving account. That's going to be helpful when we get to the budget process. Because that could be additional funding that we apply to FY '20.
Should that, first bullet, have a colon?
Are we on budget papers?
Yeah.
Flip some papers here. Yes?
Say either strategically planned or strategic planning? Or is it supposed to say what it says?
It is strategically planning for the future.
It is. Okay, so that's the?
That is, and we can double check it, but I'm pretty sure that's what it is, yeah. We've said it both ways actually. But it was Vision 2020, strategically planning for the future.
As long as it says what we want it to say.
So normally, I mean, these are budget priorities that change a little bit, I guess, every year. It could be that way, so if anyone has suggestions for changes for this year, we're happy to hear them.
I do, I do know we had some conversations about world language. And so we want to make sure that whatever direction that we take is part of the budget priorities. And I think bullet number 123 probably touches upon that a little bit. So I just wanted to, to put that, move that forward because that is a conversation we're going to have next month. We want to make sure that while we're considering budget priorities, there's a place for it to be supported. And I think that fits very nicely in, in terms of supporting our world language. Certainly, preparing our students globally for the 21st century is definitely something that would fit into that.
Saying if it might, it might make sense to have some specific reference to it in that bullet?
I think it covers it. And, I mean, it's up to the committee, but I think.
I, I was wondering about that, actually. So I'm glad you said that, yeah.
And certainly, we don't, we do not need to approve these tonight.
Right.
It's just sharing that these are in draft form. And they really just, if they look familiar, they're '19's budget priorities.
Do you want to kind of sweep on this and bring it up next one? It'll be good as written. Want to give it a month?
I think that sounds good.
Okay.
And here is a little bit of exciting conversation. So there are actually three documents before you. The first is the calendar that we used historically. So it's the calendar that we use to present this year's budget. On the flip side is the calendar that I was actually proposing based on conversations that we had over the summer and maybe in June and so forth with the town. Mark Purple, when they made the decision to move up town meeting. So town meeting is now in March rather than April. Last year, it was April 9th. This year, it's March 23rd. So taking that into consideration, I backed up some of the dates and compressed the timeline. And then I actually received the draft of the budget calendar for FY '20 from the town. So if I could just do a visual and suggest that this was condensed, it's pretty much half of that in terms of timeline right now. So basically, what they're looking for, and that's in, that's a handout as well. You might have it as one of the ones that I provided you in your, the paperclip version. The budget is due to the town. And I'm, I'm not going to look up at a, my, the administrators over there quite yet. We've had some preliminary discussions about this and have sort of a tentative plan in place. But there's no way around it. This is ambitious. It says that the budgets are due, and noon is in bold. So I think that's high noon reference, on October 17th. So for us, it's a huge departure from the norm. I pulled up last year's book that was shared with advisory and we actually presented to advisory on January 31st. This year, advisory will review our budgets, which probably means we'll be presenting to them on December 12th. So it's ambitious. And we will basically start conversations about budget next week. One of the things that we are going to do that will help, I think, our administrators tremendously is to allow them to enter their FY '20 numbers directly into iVisions, which we've not really done before, and allow you to put those details of what you're, you're looking at proposing for budget expenditures next year right in the system. So it really cuts out about two weeks of paper. So you'll be able to see your '19 and, and we'll be able to put those 20 estimates right in there. And the principals will be able to have everything just enclosed right in the system, which should definitely prove far more efficient for us in our processing behind the scenes. And we'll be doing some training on, on that next week. We've talked already at Central about how we can have sort of the technology needs conversation and the special ed needs conversation so that we can work in collaboration with our principals. Our staffing, projections for '20, met with Nina and Becky, and we're rolling up FY '20 projected salaries within the next week. And we all know that's about 85% of the budget. But our staffing projections will totally be based on, you know, anticipated students already in the system and Clayton's extraordinarily accurate kindergarten projections. So that's, you know, that's what we're working with.
Yeah.
That's kind of.
A two-week change in town meeting translates into two months plus change in the budget process, but whatever.
But the good news, there's, there's Ray, you know, there's always sunshine somewhere. That means by the December break, we should be finished Southborough. You know, that's a stretch for all of us, but that's the ray, you know, that's the ray of hope at the end because we will have presented to them on December 12th. And we'd be able then to put Southborough's budget together. You know, it's different for us, but other communities, you know, Westboro votes their budget in October every year, but they're used to that budget cycle. So for us, it's, it's a shift, it's a change.
So, so we don't have to have our final proposed budget and public hearings, et cetera, before all, before October 17th then? We just have to have something to submit to advisory and the selectmen?
I would suggest.
Is that correct? Because, but if they're publishing the war, I mean, the warrant is closed November 11th. So do we have to have?
It doesn't publish until much later.
The public hearings, like how are we going to?
I would suggest that we would at least want to review it at a preliminary level. The conversations I've had with, with Adrian, who is the financial advisor, advisory chair, is that if changes are made, we can always amend on the town floor. Which is probably not the most desirable. I think, you know, we've spoken a little bit about this. The bigger challenge, while not necessarily a K-8 issue, because Southborough votes the Algonquin Regional Budget, we have, we do not have any numbers, any firm numbers, even from the state until February. And sometimes we're hard pressed to vote Algonquin in March. So if this is the timeline, we will be amending the regional budget on the town floor. Unless something miraculous happens with, you know, getting the numbers. One of the big impact. One of the big impacts for K8s and also for regional is health insurance costs. So, we know at the regional level, if we have an increase in about 3%, almost one and a half percent of that is life, is, is health insurance. So, you know, right now they're projecting an 8% increase on, on health insurance. So, if we're seeing that at the regional level, then the town is seeing that. And we had the 11th hour changes, you know, just in health insurance when we were pretty much voting the recommended budget at, at the high school. So, the town will have that same issue. So, it's going to be a very interesting year. Respect the timeline that they have and, you know, we will certainly do 150% effort to pu, to get this into, to, you know, timeline.
And, you know, it's probably not a bad idea to move into a regimen of, you know, moving the process up. It's not a bad idea, but certainly what's going to happen is there will be still ongoing discussion dealing with changes, you know, which will then translate into amendments, town floor. I don't necessarily know that that translates into a lot more discussion if there's a lot of agreement from the committees at that time on the amendments, but still. Here's what it is.
So, back to Katura's question too. If I look at the selectman vote, the budgets, the 29th. So, from that date, from now to that date, actually earlier than that date, probably around the 30th, we would need to vote at least a preliminary. We've been very fortunate over the last, I don't know how many years, but the last four or five years, I can only remember us changing the preliminary maybe once slightly. So, we vote the preliminary in January. What, we've been voting the preliminary in January so that when we've gone to financial advisory, oftentimes the discussion was such that we voted the preliminary and the recommended at the same time. You know, that we didn't have that additional month. I think when we went to advisory last year, just looking at the presentation that we, we had. When we went to advisory last year, we had a really strong preliminary and they asked whether we thought we would change it. So, we voted the recommended at the twen, at the February 14th, Southborough. But there were no changes from it. So, it was pretty firm. There's no, you know, indication, we wouldn't have been able to do that again. But again, that was in January, not October. So, additionally, they had asked, you know, so what do you think your increase is going to be? I said, "Well, you know, we pick a star from the sky." But generally, we've seen a three or a 5% range, three to five. And Mark Purple said that seemed reasonable. And everybody seems to think that's reasonable. So, it's reasonable. And I guess, you know, it come in somewhere in that, and that would be what they expect.
Can I make one request for the principals? Which I've done the last several years, I think. I think it's great to see not only what's in the budget, but what you wish was in the budget. So, it's kind of a wish list at the end. And it's generated some really good discussions among advisory when we've done that. I think, well, the kindergarten, one good example. I think language was another. Where, you know, they're interested and, you know, they want to know what we're thinking about. And if we can gin up support early, then I think we're more likely to get it.
Okay.
I'd appreciate it if you could think about that.
And some of the feedback from the principals last year was that the process didn't allow them to, to have that conversation as much as we had in the past. And so, this year, I think if, when they go into infinite visions and they represent what they want compared to 19, we would be able to extract some of that because we can always, we're, we're going to have to reduce because we don't always budget what, what all we want, right? But that would be a great snapshot as well, to see that preliminary run of put what you want in there. And then, that we can extract for the school committee and show what we've reduced, which is just a natural part of the process anyways. And generally, I don't think we've lobbed off any particular programs, but we've maybe trimmed. So, that would be good to have as we go through the, the March to October 17th. A hush falls over the crowd.
I'm just still trying to understand what we're going to do. So, are we, are we then at our next regular meeting that we have here? Are we planning on sort of preliminarily approving a budget that would go to advisory? Is that the idea? So, there's going to be, and are we having subcommittee meetings between now and then in order to come up with the preliminary budget? And is that, is that the idea?
So, we have a lot of work to do behind the scenes.
Yeah, okay.
We have a lot of data gathering. Some of it's already motioned. So, there may, we may find ourselves in a situation between whatever dates here, October 17th and November 30th. Besides our November school committee meeting, we may need another school committee meeting. We'll certainly have budget subcommittee meetings. We generally have one or two before we even get to the preliminary vote. And then, we generally have one between preliminary and recommended just to make sure we're, we're all aligned with the numbers. What's missing here is the November date. I would suggest that it will be nearly impossible for me to have budget numbers in the format that's anything credible by our next October meeting. It's just too much data put together. Yeah.
If you think about the date, and you said, you said, "Advisory," well, so our meeting's on the 10th, right? October 10th. So, this says a week after that, the budget has to be submitted to the selectman's office.
Right.
You know, which means there's not a lot, there's not a lot of time to have dialogue with the advisory.
Yeah.
So, I, you know, this is, I think it's a, it's an experiment.
Flexibility is probably, positivity and flexibility will be the illies, the idillities that we need to think about here.
We need to leave here positive.
I, so, what, whatever we submit on October 17th by noon, can that be changed?
Bold noon. Yeah.
Can that be changed after that? Or is the only way to change that to do an amendment on the floor?
Yeah, this, this, no, no, no.
It can be changed. Okay.
This is not, yeah, this is not a, a regulation or anything like that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All this is just...
But if the warrant is closed on December 11th?
I'm sorry?
The warrant is closed on December 11th, so then that's the point at which...
So, the warrant being closed is the language in the warrant?
Yeah.
Sometimes it's not the number in the warrant when the warrant's closed. It's like, what are all the articles, right? Roger, I'm looking for confirmation on this. I know sometimes they've asked for the language of the warrant. And it's kind of boilerplate language for us about the, the budget. And we've been able to fill in that budget number after the fact?
Yeah, we, we don't, we don't have the same issue that some other people submitting warrants do. Because ours, ours really is kind of the template to fill in the numbers. But one thing I'm thinking about is, I just don't know that it applies. I really don't know, actually. I'm going to attend advisory tomorrow. Typically, you can't increase your number a lot from what's in the warrants. That's the general practice. Now, I don't know how, so, I think, I think, I'm going to, yeah, I'm going to go to advisory when I sort of ask the question about budgets in general. Because, as far as language, as long as language is generally the same, it's okay. You know, people change language on town floor a lot. You just can't go in with a different, you know, kind of, kind of totally different concept, if you will, than what you were going in with.
Okay.
I'm really interested in this, you know, does, does everything have to be high? Because you can't increase. And that's, and that's with an early warrant closing, that's, that might be a challenge. But, you know, we're going positive.
From a budget standpoint, it would seem that the request to have sort of two tiers would be essential in this case. So, you know, the, the kinds of things that the principals might put in their budget, but keep it as realistic as possible, but know that if we had to come down, because that might be some of the conversations, then what's the, what's the B-list?
Yeah.
That would be the kinds of things that we would want to reduce. So, to, to that point, if we're here and then we're told we need to come down, we've already identified the areas that we would reduce. Because this is very different from us. By the time we've gone in, that conversation about reductions to get into, you know, to get into alignment with the town has already happened. Now, it makes me that this is what we present and that alignment conversation takes place after we present to financial advisory. So, for me, if I look at this whole chart, the date that I'm backing into is sort of December 11th and 12th.
Yeah.
When we go to financial advisory and do our presentation and, and kind of have the preliminary numbers in good shape, we may be that plan B to go in and do reductions if we need to. Because when we go to financial advisory, and I can't speak for what is in their mind when they put this together in terms of what their expectations are. But when we've gone to financial advisory before, it, it's been sort of a preliminary, but firm. What was that fake real money that you used earlier? So, I love that. So, you know, that's pretty much what it would be, I think. And then, that, that gives us a little bit more flexibility of time. Because we also have to remember, there's like a, there's a major holiday in there, which usually shuts down the world when the, you know, when the turkeys start popping into the oven. So, we've got a lot of time there. We don't have a lot of time. But we, you know, we'll start the work and, and try to back into this as much as possible. We'll be having a lot of meetings.
To me, the T date is...
Brownies.
Selectman vote on fiscal 20 budgets, January 29th. So, if we would approve ours at our January meeting, it should be hot.
Which would be a month earlier. Positively, positively flexible.
Isn't that what your proposed calendar says?
My proposed calendar?
Because you're only recommending...
Yeah, that, that was based with this, Paul, I put together before I saw this.
Oh, okay.
So, this was the one that I thought was probably going to be a, like a one-month early budget process. And then, this one...
I don't know. I think it's still okay.
...about, so. It's, it's, it's interesting, though. The top part's really bold. It's, that's really serious language. And the rest of it is sort of just budget-like, you know. So, I'm hoping that means that there's some flexibility there and that the bold language they're really taking seriously. But appreciate that they might have to have some revision there.
Yeah, I mean, on deadline, there's deadlines, there's padded deadlines.
Yeah.
There's real deadlines.
Yeah.
To me, selectman vote on the fiscal 20 budget, that's a real deadline. Warrant to be signed by selectman Tuesday, February 19th. That's a real deadline.
That's it.
Yeah, but this, this was, the question that remains is, you know, what flexibility is there between, let's say this, well, let's say December 11th is warrant closing dates. And, you know, it's what? I guess, I guess it's really when the selectman take a position, they're going to vote it, but then...
They're going to go to the printer until late February.
Lots of times when Mark will call in and when he, you know, when we talk about the warrant, it's about new language for the warrant being presented, not the actual dollars. So, it's, you know, do you have any warrant articles? Like, we're going to move the, one of the roofs forward or something like that. Not necessarily the finite numbers that are going to be on the warrant. But clearly, the 25th, it's going to the printer. So, that's it. That's a bold line.
That's a real deadline.
It's an un, un, bolded line. So, I think there's a little bit of flexibility, but there's absolutely no doubt we're sort of fast-tracking this process.
Yeah, right.
So, next month, we would almost have to vote the budget priorities because we use them as reference a lot during the budget preparation.
Yep.
And also, I think, also, we're going to have to have a preliminary budget number, right? Next month.
Sometime next month. We might need another meeting to just chalk budget.
Well, we'll definitely have subcommittee meetings.
Yeah, then we can have a lot of courage with the subcommittees. But that's, that's exciting news.
Yeah.
Positivity. I'm, I'm going to look up across the table there. It's exciting news.
That's what you do right now.
Keep positively exciting.
Charismatic positivity.
Charismatic positivity.
That's what it is.
We're just, we're going to say every day, charismatic positivity.
All right. We're going to go for that.
Yeah.
Educational policy, not at this time. Policy development and distribution. We had a few distributions.
We, we did just distribute the index. Cheryl is trying to guide everyone towards the virtual version of the, of our policies. So, they're all up online. But here, here is the index of all the policies that we have. And then, the religious observance policy was actually voted in June at the combined meeting. And so, there it is, just for distribution purposes. And Greg has been busy studying policy subcommittee dates. It looks like there's a policy meeting coming up. Turn it forward. We will be having a combined meeting. We just haven't had a successful Google yet. Because we do want to, Julie, this is a battle cry here for us, get the acceptable use policy moving along, the social media policy, because we'd love to have that possibly voted at the second combined meeting this year, which unless we add one, would be December. And if we could get it to a first read on the 26th, that would be great. We might make that timeline.
Okay. Personnel items, distribution.
I did want to point out, this is kudos to Jennifer Henry. You might know her as Jennifer Ostroff. So, Jennifer Ostroff's been in our district for, as, as an employee of the district, a well-respected employee. She's a BCBA, board cer, board certified behavioral analyst. I'm practicing. And so, she has moved into the role of a preschool coordinator. I'm really excited for her. I think she's going to do an amazing job. And Clayton was, you know, very much a supporter of that and met with her several times, so.
She's doing great.
Yeah.
Get the ground running and take...
So, we're excited for it. She's moving on.
Communications, staff, you.
So, this was our second Constant Contact distribution. There's a postcard in there somewhere. We have these postcards all around town. And interestingly enough, we've had more than ever people subscribing to Constant Contact who are not school, family members, the community members. So, that's kind of exciting. And last year we maybe had a handful. This year, I think, we're up to about 90, which is a lot.
Saw the letters from UMass Lowell Symphonic Band Camp for...
Yeah, I got...
Lindsey Sherman and Lisa Neece. That was a great...
Exciting news. I don't know if the administrators want to share the, the good news about Lindsay and Lee? Or not? Yeah, we're excited.
I'll share about Lee. About Lindsay? I'm not sure.
Yeah, was Lee especially, I guess she should have been assistant director or something.
Oh. Her, um, symphonic band camp.
Yes. You were thinking.
Loves it.
I was thinking of something else.
Yes. No, no, not that news. We'll save that.
Yes, so the accommodation for both of them and their commitment to, I don't think this is their first year doing it, but really, they, they do such a wonderful job meeting the needs of all of our students in, at Neary. But above and beyond that, the participation in this during the summer months is just incredible and speaks volumes to, to their commitment to bringing music education to all kids. So, really, it was wonderful for them to share these letters with us. And I shared them with Superintendent Johnson so that they could be a part of their, their file.
Glad you did. It seemed like they're being positive role models for our students.
Absolutely. Charismatic, just said, absolutely. True.
Also, with your school committee meeting dates, this is something very exciting in the world of scheduling. the world of scheduling. Sometimes out of the, in the most unexpected moments, you get a call saying, are you in town? Can you come in and sign the warrants? So this year, we finally were able to work together over the summer and put an actual schedule together for school committee members to know when to come in. It's this strange-looking list and it will say exactly the days we're going to have warrants for you. We will always have a pile of great things to sign at school committee meetings. We are backing into combined meetings, so usually everybody's there, so we'll have warrants there as well. But if you look at the Southborough column, you'll see that you'll be signing on the 10th and the 24th. And we're going to try to adhere to this schedule as closely as we possibly can unless there's an extreme circumstance. And so you can plan around these dates and not have to worry about getting calls. Can you run right over and sign? So this is something we've been trying to do for a while and we've been able to do that this year.
Nice.
So, not that you schedule your world around warrant signing, but this might help if you do. And then we'll call. One more knock on your door.
Action on minutes from the June 13th, 2018. Need to approve. We'll give the packet.
Listen to the edits, it's okay with me.
No, I'll move that we approved the minutes for the Southborough school committee on Wednesday, June 13th, 2018, as submitted.
One second.
Any discussion?
All with air. It's unanimous. Payrolls, I'm sure we have, agenda items for next month, school improvement plan, update on that K-grade rural language committee.
His plans will be dynamite. Just, boom.
Anything else for next month?
Preliminary budget, FY '20, just kidding. Quite yet, but you know, we have, that's like positivity times 10. Definitely budget conversations and vocal budget priorities.
We get an update on the school lunches, have been asked several times from different parents about it.
In terms of the finance, in terms of?
In terms of changing of the lunch menu, any conversations that happened in the spring?
Sure.
This brings us to audience sharing once again. Do you want to have anything?
I have one thing, it's in your packet, I'm sorry. This actually came up on June 26th as well, just for general sharing. This was held, this, this presentation was held in several high schools, most recently Franklin High School and actually a participant in the Safe School, Northborough Southborough Safe School Working Group that was present on June 26th is working very closely with the Metro West Commission on the Status of Women. This is going to be held at the Northborough Library. It will go out as a, as part of a one-call, just to make sure people are aware of this. I actually think I'm on the panel, or I think that's what happened last Wednesday when we read the meeting. But it should be an interesting conversation and exchange of information. It is a significant issue with young teens and should be a very informative evening. So it's Revenge Point in Teen Sexting. Originally it was going to be sponsored at the high school and that was moved to, you know, to the town library in Northborough. There's more information on the website. This will be posted on our district site as well. Very serious, but important topic that unfortunately affects our teens and younger students as well, really anyone who's using social media. So we're going to make this available and send that out.
There's a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion that we adjourn? Second.
Again, all in favor? Senator Garret.